There we go. Look at that.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of February 19th, 2019. Roll call?
Five Selectmen present this evening, as well as Town Council and the Town Administrator.
Okay.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Peter, since you're already standing, why don't you do a pledge of allegiance for us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to our republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Me? Announcements. Tony?
Aset.
Mary?
I have none.
Peter?
I just have one. There's nothing in the file. But I just have one. The drop-in center is open Wednesday, between the hours of five and eight, over at the Church of the Good Shepherd, which is on High Street over here. If you have anybody who's having issues relevant to drug or alcohol abuse, please see if you can get them over there. They've got a lot of help for you. The other thing I want you to know is the next one, not this one, but the next one, which is, it's like the third week, right? The third week of the month, which I'll tell you a little bit more later, is they're going to have a discussion about the use of those smoking alternative devices.
The vapes?
The vapes. They're gonna have a big discussion over there. They're gonna have a nice group. And not only that, but how it affects children, because a lot of kids think this is much safer, and they're using them, and there's some issues that need to be dealt with, and they want to try to head that off. So I thought that was a pretty nice thing. Tonight, for the first time, the hospital, I mean, not tonight, but Wednesday night, for the first time, the hospital will actually have a booth there, which they haven't had. So they finally got that together, thanks to some help from Derek and some people he knows there. And the gentleman, we had a meeting, and so that's gonna be great, too. The hospital's gonna be participating in the best that they possibly can. There is the hip pressure stuff, but they're gonna deal with that and make it work. So that's really great news, and they've done some really good work. So don't be afraid to go there if you're having a problem. Walk in there. I'm telling you, they're the nicest people in the world. They'll help you out. All the help you need is there. If you are in the other boat, where you have somebody you know that lives with you, whatever, and you're having difficulty dealing with them, go there. They've got a lot of good suggestions for you, a lot of good ideas. They can help you. All right? So go there and do what you can, and I appreciate it. All right, that's it for me.
Peter, you said you had something?
Yeah. Through the Town Moderator, there are vacancies on the Finance Committee. So if you're interested in finance and numbers and all that stuff, I find incredibly boring, you can apply.
Okay.
I thought you were gonna mention, can you mention about the problem with the two postings? Why don't you bring that up, so that we get it out of the way? So everybody knows out there that it's, that we don't have an issue.
Yeah. Actually, I worked on this with Town Council this afternoon. We, what we figured out was that the warrant was prepared and posted not once, but twice, for the spring town meeting. So I heard about this, and so I went to Town Hall. I looked outside the Clerk's office, and lo and behold, there was one warrant. And then there was a, quote, "revised warrant" up there. So I got ahold of this gentleman. And what I found out happened was that our office, in a burst of efficiency, contacted the Constable and got the warrant posted and delivered to the Chairman of the Finance Committee and the Town Moderator, and, you know, got everything done last week on Wednesday. Unfortunately, Town Council had not had an opportunity to review the warrant. He came in on Thursday, unbeknownst to him, the warrant already being posted, proceeded to look at it, made a couple of minor changes to it, and lo and behold, went into the Selectmen's Office and handed it over, and said, "This is ready to be posted." And then he found out it had already been posted. So the Constable was called back and was told to post the latest version of the warrant, and apparently misunderstood that he was to take down the old version of the warrant. So everybody was perplexed and confused over why there were two warrants. Geez, are we gonna have to open town meeting twice? Are we gonna have to hold it twice? What's going on? All kinds of craziness. Bottom line is, I pulled down the one at the Clerk's Office. The Constable's gonna be sent out to pull down the other extraneous ones, and we're operating under one warrant, as per usual. This is what happens when we try to be efficient.
Yeah, well, we have to just get a little better at some of this stuff, just so that we don't have these kinds of things happen.
It was a close call as to whether to do anything at all, but a department that shall remain nameless, and it wasn't Derek.
Oh.
Nameless?
I put the wrong fiscal year in their budget request, and so it's like, geez, we're gonna look dumb at town meeting if we don't at least have the right fiscal year. So let's clean that up. So we did.
So we doubled down on dumb before town meeting.
We all set there?
All right.
Just, and further to this point, you know, one of the reasons you run into this sort of last-minute rush to get everything done and posted and up and running is the charter requirement that it's gotta be posted 45 days before the start of town meeting, which, of course, is the actual election day, not the start of what we think of as town meeting. So that's why, in the warrant, you're gonna see an article to amend the charter, to push the election off until after town meeting, and to close the warrant the second week of March, which will give more time to creating a proper warrant. Hopefully, it'll lead to less of the last-minute stuff.
We set? Okay. Just one very quick thing. I'd like to thank the Municipal Maintenance Department with the snowstorm. Some people were concerned they were all plowing. If they hadn't gone out and removed all the slush and snow, we would have had frozen ice everywhere. So again, thanks very much for what they did. Next?
All right, citizens' comments?
Any citizens here? Okay, board comments. Tony?
No, all set. Thank you.
Mary? Peter?
Looking forward to a brief meeting.
Good luck.
No, I think, I think I've said enough.
Just a quick update. The bike path that's scheduled for Narrows and Myanadab is, basically, they've called. Ken Buckland has responded to MassDOT 5, and they're in the process of putting a schedule together as far as what we have to do. And as of right now, the bike path is on the TIP program. It's been moved to 2024 due to a lack of funding for other projects. One project alone has gone up $8 million in about two years. So that's coming. And of course, Route 6 and 28 is on schedule to go ahead this coming year. Everything's in place. The bids are out, et cetera. State is already working.
The bike path?
No. 6 and 28.
No, no, but, but the bike path, we're still...
The bike path, you know, we'll see how it works. We're short about $13 million over three years for the projects that are in the TIP that have, with increases in less than a year's time. But we'll see what happens. That's it.
Okay. Next up is appointments. Robert Haskell, Zoning Board of Appeals. Come on down, Mr. Haskell. All right, so in the, in the, you know, considering what happened the last, it's not some time ago, about our appointments and our friends, Haskell lives across the street from me, and I did encourage him to get involved somehow. This is the committee he chose, and I said that that would be a good one. And so he's here to volunteer his time, and he was a longtime fireman in this town, and I think everybody knows his face. So I really don't have to say much about him. But, you know, I just want everybody to know, yes, he's a friend of mine, and yes, I encouraged him to do this. But, you know, there's, there's no, nothing going on here.
You're just stocking the pond with your fish. I get it.
Exactly.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, yeah, that's nice, Peter.
Just as an aside, just so everybody knows, that we were basically called out on processing people through and not following the procedures that have been in place for probably the last seven or eight years, at least. So in this particular case here, we made sure that the ZBA chair and committee person had actually been there, and the ZBA actually voted, basically, recommendation.
Yes, they did. I have the recommendation right here.
Going forward, this is what will happen from now on. If we don't have all this paperwork in place, we don't do anything till we do.
I got a thing from the chairman that says, "Mr. Haskell is strongly recommended." So everybody that's here, the board did their thing, and his...
Could you like to say anything before we vote?
Just...
Before we cast you to a board of...
Before we condemn you?
No, just some things about me. I've lived in town since '69. My wife and I moved here from New Bedford. Born and brought up in the city, and parents and everybody lived in the city of New Bedford. I've been involved in public safety for almost 50 years, total time. I started when I was real young and continued. And I'm probably one person that loved going to work every day. And I was a firefighter here in the town of Wayham for 36 years. I was a firefighter full-time for the U.S. Air Force, Department of Defense, for 24 years, and with the State Fire Academy as a fire coordi-, I'm sorry, a program coordinator, and I still am there on a part-time basis. So my, I've had an opportunity to really, really, really expand my knowledge and expertise, so to speak, and it's followed right in my family. My grandfather was on the job. My dad was on the job. I'm on the job, and my son's on the job. And it's been, it's been quite a trip. Enjoyed every minute of it and look forward to keep going. It's, but I'm slowing down a little bit. So I have more time for this. I've always wanted to sit on a board and utilize my expertise that I've gained over the years to make a difference. This town is changing so fast. There are so many new things going on in this town, and new blood never hurt. Never hurts at all. No ideas or what have you. Do I have all the answers? Absolutely not. Well, do I know where to get the answers? Absolutely. And to make a determination on what needs to be done, I can, I can do that very, very easily. So now I have the time in order to devote to this job, and I look forward to working with the board. And hopefully, if you have any questions of me, feel free to ask. I'd be glad to answer them.
Tony?
No, all set. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
All right, no. Are you ready?
Oh, yeah, I'm all set.
All right. I move, we approve, Robert Haskell, 6th Myanadab Wayham Mass, to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an associate member, for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Questions on the board?
No.
None heard at all in favor?
Aye.
Close, abstain, 5-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. I look forward to working with the board.
Yep. The appointment sheet will be in the Selectmen's Office tomorrow, and you can go there first, and then go down to the Town Clerk and get sworn in.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
What you can also do is, you can fill out a form asking to be a regular member of the board.
Okay.
So when the opening comes up, you're on file ahead of time.
Okay, very good. We'll do that. Thank you very much.
There's a little ethics class you have to take, too. They'll tell you about that.
I'm sorry, sir.
There's a little ethics class you have to take, that we all have to take. You do it online, right? And you can, it's something you gotta take as part of being on a board. So you'll see. They'll give you all that information.
If I may ask one question about that. I have to do that on the state level, and I've done that every year. Will that suffice?
It might.
It's probably the same.
The last council.
And I have the paperwork to show that I've taken the ethics training?
Yeah, you just give it to the clerk downstairs.
Very good. Any, any other information that you need from me, as far as paperwork or anything like that is concerned?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next up is an application for the modification of a Class II license issued to Buzzards Way Garage, 3067 Cranberry Highway, East Wayham Mass. Now, there is a little...
I want to open the hearing.
Yeah, okay. And then we can hold it and tell you what...
What I'm gonna do is, just for people, I'm gonna postpone, basically, further till six weeks, because he has to go back before the ZBA.
Correct.
The problem being is that the ZBA decided it was a major modification.
Right, well, you...
I don't wanna discuss, I'll discuss it once we open the hearing.
That's fine. Okay. I move, we open the hearing for the modification of a Class II license for Buzzards Way Garage, 3067 Cranberry Highway, East Wayham Mass.
Second.
Tony, yes?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Alan, yes. Again, we had got the information. The paperwork had been signed off by Inspection Services and all the other departments. The problem is that this particular license was a special permit originally, and as a special permit, it was done by the ZBA, and therefore, when you have, it's usually 10 or more parking space changes. A lot of times, it will require a site plan review again. And, but what happens is, you have to go before the ZBA for them to make a determination whether your modification is what they call a major or minor. We had it scheduled, so they, basically, last week, I think it was Wednesday, they had a hearing, and it was decided, actually, it was a meeting, not a hearing, and they decided they were gonna consider it as a major. So it's been scheduled. Usually, that takes two to four weeks to process through, because you have to, you know, publish the dates. You have to get it engineered, a sign-off, and an actual site plan. It has to be done properly. So I'd like to, basically, continue the hearing for six weeks.
All right. Is everybody okay with that? I move, we continue the hear, this hearing for a six-week period. And you got a date, Peter?
Actually, I think you want to choose a different date. That would be April 2nd, which is Election Day.
Yeah, let's do it the following week, then.
Okay, we'll make it April 9th.
9th?
April 9th. All right, so I move, we continue the hearing till April 9th.
Second.
Pending outcome of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, abstain, 5-0-0. Continue the hearing. Tony, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Mary? Peter? Patrick? Alan?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Next up is the CB, CDBG grant. Come on down. You're the next contestant.
Good evening.
Nice to see you, Peter.
Help the board get the memo that I sent out via Janet. Okay. So the town is, again, facing the application round for the CDBG grant for fiscal, federal fiscal year 19 funding. The application date is on March 8th. It's an electronic submission, so we have until midnight to submit it. But we've never gone that close, by any means. So I sent a memo, which provided recommendations from me and really from Ken Buckland and the Redevelopment Authority for the projects to be included in the grant application. The town's eligible, again, to apply for $825,000. That's the amount capped for mini entitlement communities. Again, the town is fortunate, in one way, to have this mini entitlement designation, because it means you're not in a competitive pool of funds. But unfortunately, it's because the town has sufficiently high indicators, statistical indicators of distress that you've earned that dubious designation. So our, we have not finalized the budgets. We're still working on tweaking the budgets, but we're recommending that the town fund fully the maximum that it can for public social services, which is $165,000. There's also a limitation that you cannot fund more than five agencies. So it's a game of musical chairs, unfortunately, for agencies, because all the proposals, all the proposals are deserving. So the second page of the memo, we have a recommendation for the five agencies for funding. The Boys and Girls Club at $47,025. GATRA for transportation assistance is three different components of transportation assistance. Under GATRA, one's dial, one is to augment the dialer ride. The other is the Owl Pass, and the other is out-of-town medical transportation for people who, basically, need a taxi service type of transport that goes to New Bedford, Hyannis, Plymouth, even into Boston sometimes. So there's a negotiated amount for these trips, or a mileage amount, depending on them. We're recommending that Damien's Pantry, Damien's Place, be funded at $28,000. Reading Partners be funded at $15,000, and the Wayham Area Committee on the Homeless, Turning Point, be funded at just under $40,000, at $39,975. So aside from the public social services, we're recommending that the town fund the second and final phase of the roof replacement at Redwood Park, the Housing Authority's Redwood Park. The current grant, the FY18 grant, included funding for three, for, to replace the roofs on three of the five buildings. This would address the remaining, I'm sorry, three of the eight buildings. This would address the remaining five buildings in that complex. So...
Peter, I'm sorry to interrupt. What did, do you remember the amount in the FY18 grant that we designated? For the roofs, was it roughly $250, or...
Roughly.
Yeah.
So this number is just a prorated number per building as, as for the current grant. With that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Tony?
No.
Mary?
Um, no, I'm good. Thank you.
I just want to make note that, you know, presuming that we, we pass these proposals, it can't be said that we're not trying to assist the Housing Authority in their mission. One of the things that's been told to us for years is that if we pony up on the local level, that the state is much more inclined to pony up on their level. And shifting gears a little bit on the Redevelopment Authority, we do have a town meeting warrant article to have the Littleton Drive property office with speech, roughly 13 acres, turned over to the Redevelopment Authority for the purpose of constructing, hopefully, some affordable elderly housing. And I would hope that the state would take note of this support of the existing infrastructure that's been allowed to languish, because I don't think they've gotten great state support in keeping their infrastructure alive, and certainly assist anybody we can get in there to try to erect more affordable senior housing.
Okay, so I'm looking at the requests, the grant application requests, the three lines. One says they approve the $825,000. Allow the, we always allow the chair and the town administrator to sign the grants. The last one turns the town administrator to an environmental certifying officer. What's that for? And how does it relate to the CB, the CDBG grant?
As part of the grant-making process, we have to complete an environmental review record. Everybody would naturally think it would go to Natural Resources or Dave Bichette or something. It's really pretty much an administrative exercise, where you have to go through, you have to look at the projects that you're proposing and see if there is any environmental impact resulting from them, or any existing environmental conditions that could have an adverse effect on them. It's sort of, it's just a sort of an administrative take-home exam that you have to do. But then you have to, when you reach your conclusion that there is no substantial effect, you have to post that. Any person, any other selectman or the town administrator could be the environmental certifying officer. That simply means that they are the legal entity that would take a complaint that somebody might make, that the process was not handled correctly. You've done it every year. You've, you've designated an environmental certifying officer.
Sullivan doesn't have enough to do. We should give him another job.
It usually goes like this. Peter says, "Sign this." I say, "Will it send me to jail?" He says, "No," and I sign it.
Oh, well, that's, you're easy. The only problem I have with this particular one is it says to make him the certifying officer indefinitely. And I don't think that this board should tie the hands of another board down the road. We've always done this. I know, in some form or another, every time these things come up. So I don't mind doing it for this grant, basically.
Fine.
And for the, for the next year, even, because, you know, there's two of us who are actually running for reelection. We may not even be here next, next time this comes around, if you know what I'm saying. And I'm pretty consistent with that, that we don't, we allow everybody to do their thing, if you know what I'm saying to you, okay? So if you don't mind, I'd prefer to just say, yes, he can be the officer. I trust Derek implicitly with it. But I, I just think that it should be one year at a time for each board to make that decision. Okay?
That's fine.
Other than that, I'm good.
Okay. Couple things, Peter.
Yes.
As far as the environmental that Patrick's talking about, the state is now doing that with, like, transportation road programs, the TIP programs. It's in the analysis, as far as the environmental impact now. And the state has basically stretched this out to all the different programs. Any program that they have, it has to have a report of whether or not it affects the environment or not. So this is nothing new anymore. This is a standard requirement going forward for everything, just so everybody understands. There's nothing special anymore.
And this falls under federal environmental law, and it actually, Massachusetts environmental laws are aggregated to the, to the federal for this particular grant.
The other question I have is, GATRA is a little concerned about their federal funding coming through the state. Have they spoke to you at all about that?
They haven't.
Okay. I will let Frank A. make sure he gets ahold of you if there's an issue. I think he's in Washington this, this week.
I'm in contact with him. I was earlier with today, and I will be again tomorrow, anyway, but so...
Just ask him if there's anything going on. I know that at the SERPED meetings that we've had, there's been some concerns about possible, you know, cutback in funding. I hate to see our citizens lose the ability to, you know, not be on bus service when needed. Thank you.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I move, we approve the filing of the FY 2019 Massachusetts CDBG Grant Program application in the amount of $825,000. Excuse me, not to exceed $825,000. I know, it's, it's, it's technical. And to authorize the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator to take all actions required relating to the submission of said grant application, and to designate Derek Sullivan, Town Administrator's, environmental certifying officer for, for the next year, let's say, okay?
Motion, second?
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions on the board? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, abstain, 5-0-0. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you very much.
Boy, Peter, that was easy.
Yes, it was. He wanted to get out early tonight.
All right. The next thing is the discussion with the Library Director on request for WCTV for installing equipment at the Wayham Free Library.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Why don't you introduce yourself? You probably knew the most of us.
Yeah.
Very good. Hello, my name is George Ripley. How are you all?
Good. Hello, George Ripley.
Glad to have you onboard.
Thank you very much.
It's okay. If it collapses, we'll pick you up.
That's okay. I have been losing a little bit of weight, thanks to my fancy technology. So hopefully, we should hang in there, but...
You need to talk to Derek, though.
I have the technology.
Not the weight, though.
It's the will you need, Derek, not the technology.
I had to go up a whole belt loop this morning. I was happy with myself, so yay.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. So basically, currently, this whole current sitting here began at my first department head meeting across the street. We had a, I think it was on insurance and all that fun, which I actually found very interesting. But in the course of the meeting, I noticed the amazing projector setup we had in the upstairs meeting room in Town Hall. Sorry.
You have to actually keep it close, believe it or not.
I know, it's just the, the ringing is messing with my hearing.
Well, he can, he'll adjust it.
It's okay.
Well, he can, he'll adjust it.
It's okay.
He'll adjust it for you.
Thank you. But yeah, in the course of that conversation, Matt Underhill, Director of IT, mentioned that it is possible to have WCTV come in and put in a similar projector system by sending a request to your board. And there we go. So that was kind of the start of the whole snowball of the discussions about seeing whether or not we could have a projector system installed in the library, in our main meeting room, our large meeting room. It's been picking up in terms of its use by the community, which has been fantastic since we were recertified back in November, thanks to the guidance of your board and the encouragement from Mr. Sullivan. And it's been amazing to see the room just completely get stocked and filled with different people from the community coming in and looking for a place where they can work together to improve Wareham for all of us. So that being said, one of the drawbacks we have are, we have different groups that when they come in, they are looking for doing presentations, doing some kind of slideshow just like this. And we only have one projector at the library that is usually used for staff purposes. So if the staff is using it for something else, then in the three other meeting rooms that we have, it's not able to be used. So if we could have a dedicated, built-in professional projection system in the meeting room, it would increase its use not only for the library staff when we have programming, but also for the public when they come in to use that space. The flip side of that is also, there was some talk that it might be possible to have WCTV put in the necessary equipment to record the presentations and then put them onto the access channel as well. I think that would be useful to the town to have an additional space where that could happen, basically. Last week, we had an amazing presentation that was scheduled by Animal Control in which we had a person from, I forget the organization off the top of my head. Excuse me. I think it was Cape Cod animals, something along those lines, in terms of what you should do as a general person if you encounter an animal in the wild. You know, usually our first instinct is if you see a, you know, hurt animal, pick it up, bring it home, take care of it, and then call Animal Control, something like that. In actuality, don't do that at all. Which to a lot of people, especially who have children, is kind of counterintuitive. But especially if it's an animal like a fox or something that might have rabies. If that animal were to bite or to scratch you, Animal Control is legally required to have it tested for rabies at that point. So something like that, if it could have been filmed by WCTV and put up, it would have been a service to community to get that information out there. We had people driving over from Bourne to attend that class, that workshop, however we don't call it, it was amazing. Standing room only, entire parking lot was filled. People were parking and walking over, it was fun to see. But just as an example of some of the things that we could put up if we had that equipment as well.
Thank you. Peter, I got a question. What's the status of our current contract?
Working on it. We've forwarded it to Town Council to provide some language so that we can adjust to the Municipal Modernization Act's requirements that we hold money instead of just passing it through and then appropriate it out to them at each town meeting, spring and fall. So that's, that's pretty much the last thing. We're gonna, we'll do that, we'll go over it and we'll get it to the board soon.
Time frame?
I don't know. You don't need a lot of time with us, do you?
Got it, it's set.
There you go.
Okay. Just so you understand, George, it's in the contract that we have that we can request from WCTV, you know, equipment, et cetera. Most of that usually comes not just through their PEG access money, but also there's additional money that comes from the cable companies themselves. Unfortunately, right now, the FCC and the cable companies are talking about cutting back some of the fringe benefits that the cable, you know, basically like that PEG access channel gets. So there may be a little resistance in committing to anything right now until this is settled out. What I would suggest is that you work with Matt and with Derek and make an actual formal list of what you want and submit it to us and then we can make a formal request.
Okay.
But it may take a little longer than normal.
We do have one outstanding. I thought this room was supposed to be done with the new projector dropdown set a long time ago.
So I mean, we just have to go back and see where we're at. But I know right now, you know, that they probably gonna be a little hesitant until they know where they stand.
Sure. I, I do have a list.
I think they have enough money anyways, but that's another subject.
Yeah, this was, they, I think they actually have the equipment for this room, too.
Probably.
Okay. But just to the director, you spoken with WCTV?
Yes, sir. I do have a list that they did in consultation with Mr. Underhill, rough approximate values on some things.
Right. So, so they're aware of this and they, to date, don't seem to have any qualms about it?
No.
Okay, good.
We actually, it would be a little bit easier over there just because with the wall we have in our meeting room, we don't need the projection screen. So that makes it a little bit simpler in that sense. Yeah.
Yeah, I just, we just, for me, I need, I need a formal request to, to submit it to them, that's all. It's not really difficult to take care of, but.
Okay.
I'm a little more up to date with everybody else on the board. I've spoke to Mr. Ruiz over the last month or so and there is some concerns financially.
Well, I don't see why we couldn't submit it, though.
Oh, no, gotta submit it.
Yeah.
If you don't, if you don't ask, you don't get.
Yeah.
Simple as that.
Could we request for the status for the upgrade of this room?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure it's on whatever their, their sequence is gonna be.
We'll include that with it, because I didn't realize that was still outstanding.
And then I think also we've got, for once we finish the.
Auditorium.
Auditorium and as part of the upgrade is all the, all the technical for that as well.
That was on, that's going back more than a few years.
Well, I think that was part of.
I have a good memory for bad things.
That, that was part of an entire improvement package for that auditorium, too.
It was also, I think.
Contingent on upon us spending 600,000 to renovate the interior and a whole bunch of other things. So I, I don't blame them for waiting for that.
No.
They don't want to put in stuff and have that.
But we, we can anyways.
Plaster from the ceiling falling on it.
And then that needs some sound control and everything in there, otherwise you wouldn't hear it.
That was all part of the contract several years ago.
We've been saving egg crates.
That might, that might need some seagulls at the end of the day.
Yeah.
Are you picking on the school department again?
No, the seagulls.
Okay, whatever you say.
Well, if it would please the boards here, I could give you the list I have presently. The prices that they have are kind of broken out, so if it would be easier, we could present in just in terms of the projector itself and separate that from the full recording equipment as well.
I would suggest giving them everything that you want.
Yeah, okay.
Because if you ask for one thing and you really want 10, you only gotta get one thing.
Very true.
And then Derek can, Derek can give me the list.
Send the chair memo with essentially everything you have there.
Okay. Very good, sir.
We'll take care of it. We'll submit it and we'll give you a copy of what we submit.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to approve submitting it?
It's not a real action, but if you'd like, why don't you make a motion anyway?
I move we allow the submission, the submittal of the request for equipment for the Wareham Free Library.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you. Thank you, George.
Thank you very much.
First request's the easy one, George.
Right.
Next up is the approval of signs for the Church of the Good Shepherd on High, 74 High Street. By the way, that's the address of the drop-in center. I got it right here. I didn't know the actual address last time. So 74 High Street. All right, so let's see, they have a rummage sale, 511-19 and 10-5-19, a Christmas fair on 12-7-19, and they would like to use in front of the hospital, the town green, the town green, the corner of Cranberry Highway and Depot Street, which is where everybody's been putting them. That's actually state property.
That's state.
We can't authorize that at all.
What do they mean by town green? Do they mean Center Park?
They mean Center.
Yeah, Center Park.
Can't do that either.
Can't do that.
So we're gonna have to make that, make that notice that.
Let them know also.
Let them know. All right, let me take that out. And then they have Tempest Snob and Oak Street. And, and Makepeace Property off of Farm Road. Well, that's, we wouldn't approve that either. That's up to them to get that approved with Makepeace. It says the parking lot in Onset, the corner of the parking lot in Onset.
It says corner of parking lot.
They mean Heinz Field?
I'm thinking, I think it's at the pier in front. Remember how they put some signs in the front? That's okay, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem. The corner of Main Street, Sandwich, at, at something Sandwich Lunches, Clyde's? C-Y-D's?
That's, um.
What's that?
Oh, Sins.
Sins, yeah, Grab and Go. So right, right by the barber shop.
Okay.
Private property, doesn't matter.
That's private, yeah.
And that's private, so we, we don't actually authorize that either. I'm just gonna take that.
Do we have a list of where they can put signs now?
We probably should give them a list, you know.
So when people come in, they can just go down the list and check off what they want?
I bet they're tied up that slight little corner that comes out.
If you actually look at the new sign by law, it's gonna be voted on, it makes it all very clear.
Okay.
And that'll be nice. Okay, so I took those things out and they can deal with the, deal with that. All right, so I move we approve the, 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 placing of signs on town property according to the, what we just did.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Mary. Just again, we need to make sure that the office sends them a note about some of those areas that they've got listed that we don't, either can't do or we don't have to authorize. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstained, 5-0-0.
All right, so next is the discussion and vote on Spring Town Meeting warrant articles.
Question I have is, are we ready as a board to vote favorable, unfavorable action? Which way are we gonna word it at this point?
Is everybody ready for that?
You all move that to the next meeting?
I'm kind of thinking that way, simply because, you know, we, we only have the warrant really sitting in front of us now. And I'd like to make sure that everybody reads through it and has any questions, spend some time.
And it's actually a small warrant, it's only 23.
It's not, it's not, yeah, I was just gonna say, it's not.
Who's the petitioner?
And the other thing, too, is that we need to determine whether we want any of the town departments or the people who have citizens petition articles to come before us before we vote.
Well, we usually always have the citizens petitions.
Sometimes.
Well, it's been kind of, it's been a standard thing. Do you, is there any reason not to have them come in?
No, I just, well, we haven't done any, that's why. I'll need to, if the board wants it, I'll have the office work on that this week.
I think we probably should, don't you?
What's the point, if it goes on anyways, we don't.
Well, we have to make a recommendation.
Yeah, we still put a recommendation in the Finance Committee handbook.
Yeah.
And the Finance Committee does also.
I mean, I'd like to hear what they have to say.
For fairness to the petitioners, they should be able to present to us before we.
Yeah, I think it's fair.
Give it the thumbs up or the.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to turn down something if they haven't presented there, you know what I mean? Like, let's give them a shot to present it. You know, we might hear something we didn't know.
All right, we'll, we'll try and get this done over the next two to three weeks.
Okay.
I'll start it for next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next, is any other town business not reasonably anticipated in the last 48 hours?
Tony, you?
No. All set.
No.
Peter? Patrick?
Nope.
Alan, no.
Town administrators report, please. Oh, boy, here we go.
Get the lights.
Showtime. Dun, dun, dun.
Did you really want the lights off? I wasn't sure.
Of course you did.
I was just gonna keep on walking, right?
I can cover darkness, huh?
Psych.
Hey, this is important stuff.
Where's the popcorn?
Thank you, members of the board. Tonight, we're going over the preliminary FY '20 town budget. As you know, there's some things that usually change along the way, and that's more specifically state aid and assessments. The first thing is a revenue summary. So you start off with your FY '19 levy limit, and this is sometimes where folks get confused. So the, the levy limit is all the funds that can be raised. You'll see the number, you probably can't read your packets, it's in the dark. Our FY '19 levy limit is higher than what we approved at the previous town meeting, because our new growth came in about 37,000 higher than, than we had anticipated, which is a good thing. It means that we, you know, we had our new growth within a, within a good range. Two and a half percent increase, that is not the taxes on your own personal property or your home, that is how much the levy base can increase. This is the first time that our two and a half increase has reached over a million dollars. And then you have estimated new growth. New growth is new buildings, if there's additions, also included in there is personal property, so the solar pilots are within your new growth, believe it or not. So you're looking at a little, almost 42 million in estimated in our new, new taxes. Now, we receive other revenue, state aid, chapter 70, and charter school reimbursements. And see, that's one of the biggest part of our budget. In fact, between the state aid for general government and the school, that's over 25% of our revenue annually. But estimated local receipts, motor, that's motor vehicle excise tax, hotel motel excise. Cannabis is in there at 150,000. If you remember, last year, we used 100,000, which got us enough money to, to have the library recertified for this year, plus put the remaining, I believe, 42,000 to the school department. So this year, we're actually going to show that within the local receipts. And we've just put an additional small 50,000 into that. Frankly, for spring special town meeting, one of the things we need to bring up is whether we'll put the, the, pretty much only allowed designation for cannabis, which would be a stabilization fund, where you can put 25% of all your cannabis revenue towards what I would say for a capital stabilization fund. And I think that's worth creating, because until you have a few years, we don't know where this revenue will go. We know we're gonna make some, some good money off of it, but the fluctuations in the market as more, more businesses open up, I wouldn't recommend going much higher than where we're at until we see we have a couple of years of the, of the revenue. You have available funds, so that's such as waterways, wetlands, and harbor service permits. We pull from those receipts reserve for appropriation account. Then the enterprise fund direct cost transfer, that's everything we do and pay on behalf of the enterprise fund. The enterprise fund is outside of the general fund, but we do the accounting for them, we do the collections, we pay all the benefits for those salaries out of the general fund, and that's essentially a hit back, plus all the work that our employees do on their behalf. So we're now at the, at a budget of a little over 66 million dollars. This is just a simplification, and although it says percentage, I start looking at it as cents. So if you look at it, and it should actually read the FY '20 levy limit, but 61% or 61 cents out of every dollar is coming from the, from the taxes, and then you add the new growth and the two and a half percent increase, so about two-thirds of all our revenue is generated from taxes. State aid is another 25%, local receipts 11%, the enterprise fund is about 1%, and available funds is under, under a percent. So this is, you know, when folks want to know where our money comes from, this is Now, the, where does our money go? The expense summary. These items are the very top, the state tuition assessment, that is the school choice sending and the charter school tuition. We're now over 3 million dollars. The state, the retired health insurance, we pay that as an assessment, the retired teachers are through the GIC. And then there's other assessments, including GATRA, mosquito control, and some other small ones. The overlay is reduction in our revenue set aside for abatements. That also pays for the senior tax work-off program. So the town meeting items, health and dental insurance. Right now, our renewals are actually at a fantastic between one and one and a half percent. And that is outstanding, that is our, our increase. So it's looking like going to the Mayflower Municipal Health Group is continuing to pay off, as you'll see through further on. Plymouth County Retirement, Lyuna, Plymouth County Retirement actually is gonna go down a little bit this year. It's basically a one-time fluctuation from, they had early retirements, where we had a surcharge, and that surcharge has run out, so you'll see a small decrease. Our insurance and workers' comp insurance and everything from our marina, our one-eleven F that we pay for police officers, that's all wrapped up in that one-point-three million dollars. We are, we pay a lot of money in insurance, and that's one of the things we've been looking at. We have been doing very well on getting reimbursements from them as well, because of the trainings we're doing and how we're sending people to other outside trainings. Medicare, that's our, our tax, about one-point-four-five percent of all payrolls. Unemployment, we budget two-hundred thousand a year, we are self-insured when it comes to unemployment. We just pay roughly quarterly six-hundred dollars to about twenty-four hundred dollars for management of it. Life insurance is the small life insurance benefit given to the, provided to the employees, which is ten thousand dollars when they're active employee, and goes on to five thousand when they retire. Veterans benefits are what we pay to the eligible veterans that reside in our community, and we reimburse seventy-five percent of that back from the Commonwealth. Debt principal, our debt and, is, is far too low for our budget, our size. You know, we should really be looking at, you know, anywhere from three to five percent, so somewhere around the two to three million dollar range. The only problem is, that's your annual payment, so what will you cut to, to make that, to bring into that range? Right now, it's not possible for us to do that. I do think we, if you look at the surrounding communities and you wonder how they're doing some of the things they're doing, well, they're borrowing for a lot of them. It's interesting, I've seen some of the other communities go so far as to do, believe it or not, overrides for their, for their streets, to start redoing streets, about a million dollars a year, so it's interesting. Not advocating for it, just putting some points out there. So when you look at that between the debt, some of these benefits, that's almost fifteen million dollars. What's left over is the, is the, the items, the school budget, the school transportation as well. So you do the net, the non-net, which brings them up about twenty-nine point four million, that's a little over four-hundred thousand dollar increase for the schools. Upper Cape Cod Tech is coming in. So Upper Cape Cod Tech's increase is at two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand. And then you've got the general government budget, which is basically everything to run the town, from police, municipal maintenance, board of health, planning, administration, everything within that line, and that's increasing about six, a little over six-hundred thousand. And that includes, part of that is the estimated increases for FY twenty budget, as all our contracts are expiring in FY nineteen. So again, this is, now you start seeing where you expended. So fifty cents out of every dollar goes directly to schools, including Upper Cape Cod Tech. The intergovernmental at eight percent is mostly the, as you know, the school choice and charter school sending assessments. So, you know, you're looking at fifty-eight cents of every dollar. And then you'll see some of the other items, unclassified is your health insurance and employee benefits. Public safety is ten percent, ten cents out of every dollar. Public works, that's our DPW, maintenance of all the buildings, snow and ice and streetlights, is that a, it's really, it's, it's a laughable four percent. When you think about it, that's four per, four cents out of every dollar going towards municipal maintenance for your streets, for everything. So when people ask why things aren't being done quicker, when you look at, that is four cents out of every dollar going towards municipal maintenance for a town this size. It's, it's, it's not doable. And you go through some of the other items. So this, this is your cherry sheet aid. So you can see our chapter seventy increase is, is a laughable under forty-eight thousand, I mean, under forty-nine thousand dollars. So when, when you look at that, that's just untenable.
That's just crazy.
So, you know, the new revenue all told for the, for the school, when it comes down to it, is just over seventy thousand dollars. Unrestricted general government aid continues to, to increase, and that's, you're at two-hundred-and-twenty thousand for that. There seems to be an extra line in there that I'll change later, but the, so we're looking at about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar increase. So. This is the big one, this is, this is our assessments. So you'll see there's some small ones, county tax, an additional under five hundred dollars, retired teachers' health insurance is increasing by eighty thousand. It actually makes sense, cuz there was a, there was a dip in twenty-nineteen that just, I don't think it really made much sense for it to go down. So it's bringing us right back to the twenty-eighteen range. GATRA is a small increase, three and a half percent, still about fifty-two hundred, maybe they're planning on some of those appropriation limitations already. You can see the special ed payments are reduced by seventeen thousand seven hundred and fifty-six, so that's, that would probably be from one student that was going to out of district, that's no longer doing that program, that was hit especially on the state assessment. So here's the big one, school choice sending is increasing a hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, charter school sending two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand for three-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. And if you look from two thousand and twelve, where it was three-hundred-and-sixty-seven, we're now over a thousand dollars, we're now over three million. And your compounding annual growth rate is over thirty percent. So when somebody says, well, you get a two and a half percent increase, it's really closer to three when you factor in everything. How are we supposed to keep up when thirty percent of, we're putting thirty percent into school choice? And that is for educating children, that's no doubt, that's children from our community going elsewhere, and we are, we have to pay to educate them. But you can see, you know, our total increase is four-hundred-and-sixty thousand assessments. So our net new state aid, right, our net the, is negative three-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars. So. If we were not seeing the decrease in, small decrease in our, in our retirement assessment, cuz it's usually a two to three hundred thousand dollar increase, and our, our health is going up, the six to seven percent annually that it usually does, we would be in real trouble right now.
Derek, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Why, is there a reason, just cuz I don't know, why it goes down every single year for the state aid?
That's been.
Is that just typical?
No, the, if you look, so the net state aid, if you will.
Like, starting in like twenty-twelve, it just decreases all the way across.
That is our net aid, so as the assessments are going up, the aid that we're getting is going like this, if you will, and our assessments are, are going up at a much higher rate. So this gives you the chart on it. So if you look at it, look, look how we're trending in our, in our net state aid. Well, we, you saw some small changes in twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, part of that increase was when they started taking the health insurance into the, into consideration for the aid they were actually giving the communities, but that was a basic one-time increase, if you will. So this is one of the big factors. State, county, and this is the assessments coming back from the other way, so when you're looking at it, I mean, it's just, I don't, I almost didn't even need to do a trend line, because it is exactly like its own, own trend line, it's just skyrocketing. Medical insurance has been relatively stable while it's been increasing, and yes, we're in twenty-thirteen, we're at five-point-seven million, and twenty-twenty, we're at seven-point-nine. But you can see over the last three years, after a large spike in seventeen, we had a, we've been stabilized, which we're lucky, and that can't, that's not gonna happen forever. But the Mayflower Municipal Health Group has been doing some nice things to help reduce, you know, make, help people get healthier and reduce our costs. So Upper Cape Cod Tech, you know, that's over the last six, seven years, it's increased by over one-point-one million dollars as well.
There's more kids are going there, right?
That's right. So this is, I haven't updated this for the, the new rates, but this is what we went through before. So, one of the big things I was looking at, and this is where we need to, to come together. It looks like this year that the school's getting a four-hundred thousand dollar increase, and the town's getting, call it a six-hundred thousand dollar increase. But that's inaccurate, because the school, our direct school budget is getting four-hundred thousand, we're paying two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to Upper Cape Cod Tech, which is six-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And then another, what, almost, almost four-hundred thousand in assessments. So we're looking at them getting, getting over a million dollars in, in funds going directly towards educating the children. I understand their concern that, that's not going into our district, it's going into others, but that's, that's one of the big issues that, that's impacting us.
We're gonna have to deal with that somehow, and I know they've been trying, but.
They're working on it, but it's been very slow.
Yeah, well, it's a difficult thing to turn around. I mean, you know, you know what it is, and, and, you know, part of it is, believe it or not, once you get what, what they were saying is a bad rap or a bad reputation, you know, they pigeonhole you, you end up keeping that pigeonhole, it's a long time to overcome it.
Well, you can.
Even if you're doing a better job, you, it's hard to overcome.
You look at some of the, one of the big impacts, and you think about the timeframe, twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen, unless it coincides directly with the failed override and people's concerns, which then had people jumping ship to other communities. There's more than one person figured out, I can vote down the override, send my kids somewhere else, and I don't have to worry about impacting their education.
Right.
But thereafter is where the spike has just continued. But it's not just us, you have districts out on the Cape.
Sandwiches.
Sandwiches for over four million dollars. They have Sturgis where a lot of kids go to. But this is none of our biggest cost factors. I'm sure when you think about it, if you kept it around the, the one million dollar range, you could technically have two million back into our, into our school district.
Right.
And one of the big things is as these kids leave, your overhead doesn't decrease from twenty-three students to twenty-one or twenty.
It stays the same.
Your overhead's still the same.
Right.
And what you've seen as well is that, as a lot of the kids have been leaving, our percentage of kids within the special ed program, and this is Lancel, my daughter has an IEP and is going through that as well, that is a larger cost, a larger percentage of your population. So your costs are gonna increase, the kids with IEPs and other special needs are a higher cost in the district. Now, but that's one of the big things we need to consider, and consider how to, how to speak with those parents that have left, we've talked about that for a while.
You know, Upper Cape is paid for directly, we pay it direct, so it doesn't, it's not even in the assessment number.
Correct, Upper Cape is a.
Just going back to charter stuff.
Yeah, so this is exactly what you point out, Patrick.
Out of district and what do you call it, so, I just want everybody to understand that Upper Cape is sort of part of our education, because it's a district school.
It's a district, right.
We pay it directly, so all of that money that he's talking about that's going out isn't anything to do with Upper Cape. It has everything to do with cha-charter schools and the reimbursement to people going to other school districts.
Right. So between the, between these other districts and the Upper Cape, we pay approximately six-point-seven million dollars annually now.
See, it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
So our entire school budget is twenty-nine million, so just under thirty million, so you think about it, one-fifth of, one-fifth of their budget's going right out the, the window, so.
It's just crazy. It really, it really is, when people think that it's all public education, so if you think you're gonna get a bag of public education here, the same standards, same tests, everything, then somewhere else, it just makes no sense to me.
Well, I dare say with our, with our, our class sizes have to be smaller than some of the others now the way it's going, think about it.
It just makes, it's just not logical to me, I don't understand it, but.
Chapter seventy money's ridiculous too, look at that, look at the decrease in that thing, by a percentage, it's, it's miniscule.
It's based, it's based on the formula, which they've basically has broken, and they're working on it slowly.
Formula's broken.
But the problem is, is that they need to, and I had the discussion last week at the state house, that they need to look at the actual communities. Well, Derek and I spoke, what a poor community and a wealthy community is, wealthy communities don't need as much money for schools. And if you're a poor community, in that case, when I say a poor community, it means basically that our assessments and our property values, which come into the formula, work against us. You've got fifty, whatever number of miles of coastline, so you have million-dollar homes along the coastline, then you have stuff that's below poverty level, but the bottom line is, the way the formula is done, we lose. The whole Cape loses actually the same way. It, it just doesn't work, because they need to take and expand how they do things and actually have a factor built in for what we call a poor community. So therefore, the reimbursement rate is higher.
The lawsuit is the same way, and land is the same way, it's like, you know, it's just.
Some of the cities, like New Bedford, Brockton, whatever, their reimbursement rate for their school system is extremely high. Some of them are close to a hundred percent of their cost.
You know.
So it, it doesn't work that way, that's why we have these issues.
I went to Western schools when I grew up, when I was in grammar school, cuz that's where we were living.
They had a little money.
And do they have a little money? They're spending like forty grand a student or something.
Yeah.
And they, and they override as a matter of course, they need extra money like a hole in the head. Yeah, I mean, they just don't need it, and so, but they get chapter seventy money, I'm sure, just like everybody else does, not that they need it.
There's, there's a deep dive on this, cuz I looked at it, and you start talking about some of the indicators, and our per pupil expenditures aren't far off than some of the surrounding communities. But that starts making sense if we're spending, if we have a higher special needs population that costs more, that's eating up a larger slice of the pie, if you will. So while we're spending on average the same amount per pupils, there's a segment that's taking up some more than the, the others.
We have a disproportionate dollar amount of special needs programs, cuz when we, when I sign the warrants every week, and you go through and look at the weekly warrants for Swatch Center, all these other places that we have to use, and the dollar amounts is like a hundred thousand here, three hundred thousand there. And it's all part of the overall school budget of twenty-nine, or twenty-seven million dollars. But we're taking a disproportionate percentage of our educational costs for special requirements, because a lot of the places where the kids move to other places, they can't just go there. Certain, you know, certain, like a child, some charter schools pick and choose, some don't. Upper Cape has the ability to choose who they want, and therefore, a lot of the kids that have special needs don't have the opportunity, as they can have somewhere else. But the bottom line is, our system has to take care of it, which it should, but we're not getting reimbursed properly for it.
That's why we started the garden program, most of the high school, cuz Upper Cape wasn't taking a few kids that wanted to just.
Yeah.
Do agriculture, so some of the.
And if you go to.
Some of the teachers just decided to redo the, the greenhouse themselves, so these kids could have that experience.
I mean, if you want to, you go to Bristol County Aggie, but I think Bristol County Aggie, I'm probably gonna be wrong, but I think it costs us something like sixteen or seventeen thousand dollars to send a kid there.
It's on top of what the state aid going on there, it costs us additional fifteen thousand. And I think they're also, they redo their, I thought they were doing a hundred million dollar new school, which would be a surcharge to everybody as well, so.
There's always a surcharge. So, all I can say is that, you know, when I go to the state house, we, but from Sandwich, who Derek knows, we've been talking about these things, and we were promised, you know, a certain percentage increase in chapter seventy money. Chapter ninety money did not change at all, which is the roads, and it's just, you know, it has to change. It's either that or the system is going to fail.
You know, the Cape in general has had this problem for quite a while, and I can remember not too long ago, when they were all talking about getting together and suing the state about the way that they divide chapter seventy money and so on and so forth. But for some reason or another, that stuff never goes anywhere, they get, they've had, they got together, they actually worked towards this, but it never actually have, goes anywhere.
Actually, in nineteen ninety-three, Brockton sued the state for improper funding of schools, and that's when the, that's the last time there's been any change in the chapter seventy formula. So as of right now, which doesn't help us today, Brockton and New Bedford are suing the state again, and that's why the state is seriously starting to look at redoing the formula and stuff, because they know they're gonna lose the lawsuit. But this will be two or three years away from having a resolution.
Well, it's just, it's, it's discouraging for sure.
That's my good news.
It's fine.
Don't, that's nice.
Thanks.
That's your good news?
There's nothing wrong with the truth.
Now, let's get to the bed.
It is what it is, yeah.
Alright, good job, Derek, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is that your entire report?
No.
No. Liaison initiatives.
Tony, anything?
No, I went through the downtown and spoke with some people, it's, it's slow, it's the usual, it's very slow.
January, February, always tough.
Yes, but they expect it to pick up again. Yes, but they expect it to pick up again, and they'll be fine. They're doing okay.
Mary? Peter?
No, going to pass.
Very quickly for me, I think I'm going to go to Boston again, fight the losing battle sometimes next, I think it's going to be Wednesday. The governor and lieutenant governor are going to announce a new housing choice program, new housing choice act. It's basically going to give the cities and towns new tools to make locally designed and locally approved zoning changes to encourage housing production by reducing the vote threshold from two-thirds, which is always a problem, to a simple majority. And the bill does not mandate interfere or preempt local authority, which was the other thing we were concerned about. So this could help us on a few other things, and we'll see what happens there. Thank you.
All right. Be the consent agenda, and, oh, you all set, Peter?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we've got a bunch of minutes. We'll do these first. I just want to make sure that we have everybody here who's here for each minute, it'll just take a second. Yeah, okay. So everybody's here for this one, this one. Everybody was here for this. Everybody here for this. Oh, my goodness.
It is.
All right, so...
Eighteen thousand.
It's, it's a record. I don't know, we're pretty good of attendance around here, just so you know. All right, so I have these, and I'm going to do these as a group because I can. Everybody's here, okay? I move we approve the January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen regular selectmen's minutes. I move we also approve the January twenty-second, the January twenty-ninth, and the February fifth minutes.
Sorry, did you say the nineteenth or the fifteenth?
I said the fifteenth.
Okay. I just want, no, the rest of my God, I thought you said the nineteenth for some reason.
No, you're here.
Okay.
Twenty-nine, do you have February twelfth in there, too?
No. February twelfth, we're going to do separately because there was an absent individual.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, five zero zero.
The last one is February twelfth, and Tony was absent. So I move we approve the February twelfth minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Mary, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, four zero one.
Okay, so, that's the end of it.
A motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, so moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Wareham, have a safe day.